Good evening. I'm sorry for starting the meeting just a few minutes late, but it is June 21st. This is the Raytown Board of Aldermen meeting, regular session number five, opening session at this time. And I'm going to ask our good friend, Pat Wyndham, from First Baptist Church of Raytown, to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, tonight, we just come before you with grateful hearts. We just want to thank you for being the Creator of all things, for being a great and mighty God, for loving us, Father, in spite of who we are, for the decisions that we make sometimes that are not edifying to you. But, Father, you're there and you love us. You provide for us. Thank you so much for taking care of us. And I thank you for this great city, Raytown. And I thank you for these men and women who give so much to serve, to try to provide and make this city great for the families that you bring here. This is above and beyond, I know. They give so much time and energy. And I pray that you would just bless them and that you would give them courage and strength, that you'd give them boldness and confidence, Father, in serving this city, that they would have your heart and your eyes and your ears as they serve. And tonight, as they meet, Father, I pray for each of them, as well as each person that's here, that you would unify them and that this would be a meeting, Father, that as everyone walks away, would say, "Yes, this is what's best for Raytown. This is what's best for our community." So, Father, we lay this meeting at your feet, and we just thank you and praise you for who you are. Words in Christ's name, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Here.
Alderman Pardue?
Here.
Alderman Azier?
Here.
Alderman Hamilton?
Here.
Alderman White?
Here.
Alderman Melson?
Here.
Alderman Ertz?
Here.
Alderman Van Buischert?
Here.
Alderman Mock?
Here.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Here.
Okay, it's at this time that we open the floor up to public comments. Tonight, we have, the first on the list is, and I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Joel Grieshaber? Did I get anywhere close to that?
Yeah, you're close.
Okay.
Grieshaber.
Grieshaber. Thank you, sir, for coming. You might just turn that thing a little bit, because actually, you're addressing the board.
Right.
There you go. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the opportunity to address you and wanted to inform you about this particular weekend coming up. I am with the Raytown Amateur Radio Club, and this weekend is one of the big events for amateur radios, in that it's an emergency preparedness, a preparedness exercise coming up, where we will set up in behind City Hall here and operate for 24 hours straight to show our ability to do an emergency exercise. As you well know, such as the tragedy we just recently had in Joplin, Missouri, communications was just wiped out for a short period of time, amateur radio was in there doing some communications for a certain item. We are an asset to any different types of organization and we're a tool that the city can use for any particular type of communication needs. So, we just wanted to make sure that you know that you're invited to attend, and citizens of Raytown, come on by and see what amateur radio's all about. Enjoy doing it, and we enjoy talking about it. I think enough probably said on that subject. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that with us, Joel. Next is Mr. Larry Hayden.
Evening. My name is Larry Hayden. I live in Raytown, 9704 East Eightieth. I just thought I'd throw in a comment that, both for myself, I've been fighting cancer for the last year, so it's hard to get to meetings and just kind of throw in a request, maybe get a chance to take another look at ATU verse, get the council meetings put on TV. I used to have Comcast, and I enjoyed watching them. And when you're down, you can't get out that often, so I'd just like to see if it's possible to get it back on again.
Thanks, Larry. I'm sorry I didn't know that. I've known you for a long time, and I wasn't aware that you had that, you were fighting that illness. I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the board at this time? Once, twice? Got to move on, then. In the category of communication from the mayor, I think that it would be appropriate at this time to, and although she's going to speak to us in a little bit, I want to reach out and I want to thank Beth Lynn, our Community Development Director, for all that she's done. We are, we're going to miss Beth. She's moving to another city as the new city administrator from there. I know that, or for them. She's worked well for us. She studied under a great mentor to her, in our own city administrator, Mahesh Sharma. She came in when we needed to develop an animal control plan, get better control of our codes ordinances, and she has put a plan into effect, and the plan is working. I think we are better off today, certainly, than we were before she came aboard. And Beth, I thank you for all that you do. I know that it is a thankless job. It is probably, I'm assuming, next to the mayor, the least thankful job there is out there. You get the most number of complaints, I know, even more so than I do. And you've been very good at handling those and very professional for the city. And all that you have done for us, for this board and on behalf of this board, I thank you for your years of service. We certainly wish you well, and we look forward to seeing you more and more in the public sector. So, thank you for all that you've done. With that, I'm going to turn the mic over to our city administrator, Mahesh Sharma.
Good evening, Mayor Bauer and Board of Aldermen. I think I would go ahead and echo your comment regarding Beth Lynn. She has been a tremendous asset to the city's management team, and I would venture to say, with her credential, she was probably the most qualified, most educated department head in that community development role. She took definitely the city and particularly her department into a next level. She, when she started, there was quite a few challenges, including the reorganization of the neighborhood services from Public Works moved back to the community development. And she also took a challenge upon herself, not hiring a supervisor for almost a year and a half and doing a double duty. Recently, we hired a supervisor in that department, which was definitely needed. Through her credential, I'm glad that she's going to take a position as a city administrator, which is, I'm sure, and I wish her well, she will do great, as Kansas City and this metro has a tremendous opportunity of peers. And obviously, working with a great team here at City Hall, we all grew up together in learning and journey that we took. So, I wish her best, of luck for her new endeavor, and our doors are always open if there is anything we can do to assist her in her new role. I would just mention one item from the city administrators' weekly report, which I thought was worth mentioning on this forum. Has to do with the notification from Missouri Bureau of Emergency Management Medical Services Department that Raytown EMS received a 100 percentile scoring during the renewal inspection for the city's ambulance service license. This five-year review include area such as policies and procedures, patient protocol, narcotic oversight, equipment, and quality assurance program. Additionally, on Wednesday, June 15th, if you recall, Raytown EMS was one of the first responder to the Joplin tornado disaster, and for that effort, Governor Jay Nixon recognized Raytown EMS Department for their effort on June 15th, a few days ago. With that, I will conclude my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mahesh. We're going to move to committee reports. I'm going to start on my left with Alderman Mock. Anything to report on council on aging?
Yeah, I've got something to read. This is a report to the Board of Aldermen, June 20th, 2011, Council on Aging. Alice J. Stoll, Chair, she'd like to send her apologies tonight. She's going to be here to report on this tonight. Due to scheduling conflicts, she wasn't able to make it, so she asked me to go ahead and read in her absence. And, excuse me, have you heard the phrase, "The road to success is always under construction"? From the moment we received the mayor's proclamation heralding National Older Adults Month, Council on Aging hit that road again this year with our annual senior expo on Friday, May 6th, here in the chambers. And yes, we found success with an overwhelming attendance of 300-plus. This is the largest turnout we have ever experienced. Our diligent, hard-working crew, that our fantastic board, put it all together again and takes pride in our efforts. From the time the doors opened and on through the moments of the dismantling of the displays, it was a stage of hustle and bustle. Thirty vendors were on hand to offer a myriad of resources and information available to the seniors. Again, this year, food was beyond A-plus, compliments of the board member, Ken Blom. The door prizes were superb. The entire atmosphere was one spontaneous kinship. Parking was a concern, while our vendors park at the City Hall's neighbors on the west side, parking was still congested. However, buses brought many seniors, and for some attendees, this was their first visit to City Hall. How proud we are of our City Hall. We are convinced that the spontaneous turnout was the result of the publicity listed on the city sewer bills and Water Company Number Two. Statements publicity is continued concern for all efforts and appreciate the city's gratitude. While many attendees did not take the time to complete the surveys, the questionnaires did result in a positive comments, particularly in the area of popular services available in Raytown. Meals on Wheels, emergency assistance, libraries, Shepherd Center, Raytown Metro Flex, arts and music, events, recycling, and several others. As a result, there was a call for timely information targeting home assistance. It was gratifying to mingle with the attendees, observe the interest, and their coming together to just sit and visit with other seniors. As we review our Council on the Aging mission, we continue down the road to create awareness of available resources, empower the community through networking. How pleased we are that our city has given us the tools to promote opportunities for our construction. We appreciate the interest, support of our city, and as we travel down the road to success, we pause to give recognition, I'll stop right there, so we... Excuse me. But, that was Alice J. Stoll, Raytown Council on Aging.
I'm going to say it, Steve, because you're not supposed to say it about yourself, but the other thing that Steve did not read was that Alice commended Steve for his fine work and contribution to the Council on Aging. And he does put a lot of his time and energy into that, Steve, so thank you very much.
It's all right.
Mr. Lightfoot, anything on legislative?
Yes, on legislative, I've been in contact with several of Raytown's state representatives, and we've got a tentative meeting scheduled for the week of July, the 11th. We will have state representatives in attendance at that meeting. We'll be discussing redistricting and other issues that will be relevant to Raytown. Currently, members of the Legislative Committee are compiling information and questions to have an agenda prepared for that meeting. So, I will, when I come up with an exact date, I'll let the board and everybody else know that. Just right now, scheduling conflicts with the different representatives.
Very good. Ms. White, anything on municipal?
No, sir, we're not scheduled.
Okay. Mr. Rager, anything to add on legislative?
No.
Ms. Melson, finance?
We're not scheduled for a meeting at this time, but I would like to inform everyone that Raytown Arts Council will be presenting Hello, Dolly, July 15th, 16th, and 17th, and tickets are online on their website, as well as at Raytown Hy-Vee.
Mr. Kramer, anything on parks?
Park Board met last evening, just kind of some housekeeping stuff. Did have an issue come up, which I'd like staff to look at. They're looking at a radio system for some of their trucks, and I'm not sure of the compatibility of their radio system with city radio system, so if you guys could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Kramer, would you contact parks and make sure that they don't acquire those radios until that's been checked out, please?
I sure will.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Pardue? Nothing? Okay, very good. We're going to move to the study session at this time, and tonight, we have the emergency preparedness update, and our captain, Frank Stranamire, is with us, as is the chief of police, Jim Lynch.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. And this is kind of going to be two parts. Frank oversees the EMPG grant, and I'm going to give some basic background on how we end up with emergency preparedness, and then Frank will move forward. And Alderman did, and yourself did, for me some questions, and hopefully, we'll have integrated that into our presentation and have a lot of those questions answered for you, but we'll be glad to answer questions afterwards. How I got the responsibility of emergency preparedness in July of 2002, Kurt Wenson and then city manager came to me and asked me to take over emergency preparedness, and I told him I would. And since that time, it's been under the Police Department. Frank Stranamire's the coordinator. One of the biggest things, I think, we've done along the way is get the outdoor warning sirens fixed every year, and many of you know that, you know, the people that have been around, Charlotte and others, that we had outdated outdoor warning sirens, and they've either been fixed or they're new. And we did that along the way, about one a year, and currently, they're all upgraded and are functioning properly. We've also had to train personnel in ICS and National Incident Management System and have done so to exceed standards. I get a lot of questioning, particularly after the tornado warning that went through town after the Joplin thing. There's obviously a heightened awareness. And one of the, one of the biggest questions I get is, we couldn't hear the warning sirens when we're in our house, we're in the basement or whatever. Outdoor warning sirens are outdoor warning sirens. They're not actually intended for indoors, and people should use either a weather radio or, you know, television, something like that. The locations for our outdoor warning sirens, 56th and Sterling, 59th and Manning, 67th and Sterling, 70th Terrace and Elm, Raytown Road and 81st Street, 83rd and Stark, and 350 Highway in Woodson. Sometimes, we'll get a bleed over from Kansas City, just like Blue Ridge and Woodson, and on the south side, maybe there, at times, we get, and they're not synchronized, obviously. And I touched briefly just a minute ago on indoor weather radios. Constantino's has partnered with Kansas City Metro area and cost shared of the radios, but there's obviously other retailers out there, Walmart, Kmart, and other places that sell those, and I recommend those for any person to get those for their home protection. And I did check last week, Walmart didn't have any last week, so, but that is an avenue for home protection for yourself. James Bradford's here. We're going to talk about Nixle a little bit, and how that's worked. We just started that, I think, back in March. We tested it, kind of an ongoing testing process for us, but it gives alerts. You can sign up for it, explains here how, and there's a lot of information on one page there on Nixle, but James Bradford, who's a communications supervisor, is here to answer some questions and tell you how we intend to get it out to the public via different Again, our training, our employees are compliant with Training Matrix that's provided, senior staff's training beyond that. There will be new training requirements associated with the EMPG grant in 2011, and we're still learning about what those, what that training is. There are several helpful websites, all of which are on the raytownmo.us, but they're all incorporated on this helpful website slide. There's FEMA, preparemet2kc.org, and ready.gov. The biggest thing I think families can do is have a plan for disaster, for an emergency, and the biggest thing you could have is water, food, and first aid supplies and clothing. Those are some of the basics, but they're all, I'm just touching, I'm just highlighting this because they're all on these websites. I know some questions have been asked about preparedness at City Hall and fire drills. Talked with the fire department, and we're planning on some fire drills. You know, some tornado warning things that probably didn't work well the last time. Some people came downstairs, some didn't, and so we're going to get a little bit better at that and in training. And I know on the 28th, our SWAT team's preparing to have a training exercise after hours here at City Hall for violent intruder. And Randy Huspeth and Lieutenant Good are prepared to come sometime after that, if you'd like to talk on how our SWAT team's prepared for school violence and violent intruder type things. I know some, I know, Mayor, you asked about that, and so do other people have. Staff's helped during an emergency. We had several tabletop exercises along the way that are required by our EMPG grant. We just had a tabletop, I know several of the city staff were there, Mayor was there, and those are some requirements. But beyond that, as far as elected officials or whatever, there's a Training Matrix here, and there's some basic courses that people can take. And once people are, elected officials have asked, "Well, what can we do?" I know Pat asked, "What can we do to help?" And that's the basic thing. If you have the basic knowledge and you have these training, you've done these training exercises, that's where you can really be of benefit, so that you know what's going on and what's expected, and where to go, and who to talk to, and how it's all integrated. I'm going to turn it over to Frank Dunn to talk about the EMPG grant, and then also James Bradford's here, and we'll go from there.
Good evening. I'll tell you, between what the chief has said and what Joel said earlier, it's pretty much stolen all my thunder, but, as you know, the sirens, the outdoor warning sirens are a vital backbone to our emergency warning system. As the chief pointed out, they are primarily intended for people who are outside at the time and do not have other means of communication available. It's assumed that if you're inside, you probably have the TV on or the radio on or something of that nature. The Noah Weather radios are actually, they're now all hazard radios that the chief mentioned, are a valuable addition. I would be hard-pressed to, if I had to pick one thing that a home could do, that would probably be it. I've got two of them in my house. I've got one of them downstairs. One of the lessons we learned from May 25th episode here was, we now have one up in City Hall Admin, so that they're not dependent on only one means of communication to get the alert. But you can select the areas you want to hear about. If it's just Jackson County, you can pick that. If you want to hear from surround, alerts concerning surrounding counties, you can pick that. It won't go off unless the area you have selected is affected. So, I would highly encourage everyone to get one. As the chief mentioned, Price Chopper has partnered with the Metropolitan Emergency Management Committee of Mark to subsidize, to a certain extent, the price of the weather radios. Normally, they're a $35 radio. Price Chopper sells them for 29. So, that's a good deal, no matter how you cut it. Price Chopper at Briwood does have them. I checked last week, they had plenty in stock. Obviously, there's an ebb and flow depending upon the demand, but they did have them in stock and are well worth it. As the chief pointed out, one of the best things that we as individuals, or the citizens at large, or particularly the city leaders can do, is to have a plan for your home, a plan for your work. One website I would highly recommend is the Department of Health and Senior Services. They have a program called Ready in Three. You can request materials from them, or they have them on the website to, that give you some aid in the type of plan you should develop for your home, what kind of supplies you should keep, how to coordinate and train with the family as far as a rallying point if your home is disturbed, or you can't reach it, or something of that nature. Highly recommend that resource. The chief alluded to Nixle. This is a, it's a subscriber-type reverse 911, for those of you that aren't familiar with it. You have to sign up to get the alerts, but once that's done, you can get traffic alerts, you can get weather alerts, whatever we decide to push out or needed to be pushed out, you'll get it, whether on cellphone, or pager, or home phone, you pick how you want to be alerted. We've been hesitant to widely broadcast that, because we're still working out some of the bugs and protocols in-house. We want to make sure we're not disappointing the citizens when we do push it out, but we're close enough now that I think that if people, in the heat of the moment, want to sign up, go for it, get it done, and then we'll catch up to you. I promise. Joel Grieshaber earlier mentioned that the Raytown Amateur Radio Club, a vital component of our emergency preparedness program. This will be the fourth or fifth year, I think, that I've been out there with them, at least on part of the testing, which is what it is. Regardless of how you cut it, it's a field exercise. They operate on non-grid power, meaning generators or solar. They crave some pretty rough conditions at times, although we do help with the loan of our command post. But still, it's long, hot, tiring work at times, 24 hours straight, trying to make as many contacts around the world as they can make, just to show that they can do it, so that they, so that we have the confidence in them, that when the crunch comes, all we have to do is give them a message, and we'll know, we know it'll get where it's intended. They do a wonderful job, and I recommend at least stopping by and talking to them. As Joel said, they're more than willing to talk. Chief mentioned our participation in the exercise back in May. For the first time that I'm aware of, we participated in a national-level exercise. Everybody from the White House on down played in this. We made, we didn't see it here, the interaction, but that same exercise was taking place across the country. And it all concerned an event on the New Madrid Seismic Zone in southeast Missouri, and how the nation as a whole would react to that. It went very well. We're, we got our exercise credit, which is always important to me as Minister of the Grant, and I think that in our role, our anticipated role as a resource center and backfill for the primary responders to such an event, we're well-prepared for that. I have no question about that. In addition to the national-level exercise, we've participated in a full-functional exercise in Benton County concerning a terrorist action on the dam at Warsaw. in Benton County concerning a terrorist action on, on the dam at Warsaw. We've also helped out with Johnson County, Missouri exercises. We've helped out with Independence exercises. Part of that is, is part and parcel of our regionalization concept. The Mid-America Regional Council is composed of several committees underneath the Homeland Security Coordinating Committee. One of those is the Metropolitan Emergency Managers Committee, of which we're a part. And we, we work hard to build our resilience through cooperation. Rat Town as a whole cannot do everything for itself, and we rely on our mutual aid partners, both in the, in Missouri side and the Kansas side, to assist us in times of need, just as we go to assist them. So it's not, it's not critical that we have one of every widgets that come out. There are enough widgets to go around if they're, if they're needed. We'll make sure we get whatever it is we need. The partners have, have worked tirelessly and selflessly to, to make sure that we work together well, we test, we exercise together well, and we respond together well. No question about it. Unfortunately, this year, the UWASI funding, the Urban Area Security Initiative funding that is a federal grant program that is passed through the states to the individual urban areas, has been severely curtailed. This year, Kansas City was eliminated from the UWASI list. Historically, we've been roughly 25th out of 31 as far as risk and mitigation efforts are concerned. For whatever reason, we were whacked. Now, what the federal government takeeth away, they can give again in another year. But for this year, it means a loss of $9 million to the region. And that's, that's a severe impact on the sustainability of many of the initiatives that the region has put together. Some of those include the Terrorism Early Warning Group, the Heavy Search and Rescue from the Fire Department. What else? Some of the helicopter projects, the interoperability radio system, and a virtual command center called Web EOC that we use to communicate within the various EOCs in the region. So that's going to be, that's going to be rough to handle. Chief mentioned the EMPG grant, that's Emergency Management Performance Grant. Again, it's a pass-through from FEMA through CIMA, which is State Emergency Management, to us, to assist in the administrative portions of, of the emergency preparedness program. When we took it over in 2002, our revenue was somewhere around 28,000, give or take a few. We've almost doubled that in the, in the intervening time, primarily through just better bookkeeping and pushing the limits of what, what is allowed. Some initially, cell phones weren't an allowable expense. We persuaded them that they're an essential part of our emergency preparedness program. They allowed them. Air carts for computers, same type of thing, they allow them. So we're able to recoup some of the, some of the money that is necessary for the operation of the program. We don't get any additional money individually. Our salaries are the same as if we were doing it or not doing it. Unfortunately, it also affects sleep, but, you know, up till 11:03 last night, watching whether some of you get my emails on, on the updates, whether you want them or not. But that's just the way it is. It's part of the, part of the job, so, for what that's worth. Let's see. One of the challenges in addition to the loss of UWASI funding that I mentioned is our aging radio system. I spoke a few months back about the condition of it and told you I'd come back to you when I had some more information. Unfortunately, the information we've developed is cost, costly or more costly. It's a, it's a poor choice, but that's what we're faced with. The good news is that I believe last year I said that the, the upgrade to the radio system should be in the area of $7 million. We're not, nowhere near that. That's, that's the good part of it. We've explored several options, but when it, what it comes down to is that our current radio system, which was installed in, in 1999, is reaching the end of its service life. It's just the way it is. Motorola will quit making the particular model of console that we have in 2013. They will quit servicing it in 2018, and parts availability between those two dates is questionable at best. To upgrade the consoles themselves was the original intent of the exploratory program. However, when we found, when we got to doing more research on it, the model that replaces the one that we have now will only partially work with the radio themselves that we have. They will, you can talk to them, you can hear them, but one vital part of it is that you won't know what radio button is being pushed. Currently, if, if someone keys their mic, a display on the dispatcher screen says that's Radio 102, or Car 115, or whatever it is. They know who, who's trying to trigger their mic in case that person can't talk. The new console with the old radios would eliminate that, that functionality, and that's a safety issue that we just can't, can't do. We just can't do it. So in addition to upgrading the consoles, we're going to end up having to upgrade the radios themselves as well. Any funding, any funding that we could hope to have available requires that they be what is called P-25 compliant. This is a set of standards that the industry has come up with for the radios, outlining both the specifications as far as their output and input, but also their resilience and the compatibility with other P-25 radios, an integral part of radio interoperability. So that you could take a radio made by, oh, let's say Midland, that is P-25 compliant, and it will talk to a radio that is spec the same, made by Motorola. So there's no proprietary software that you have to buy only that brand to talk to each other. So that's the good news. One of the options we looked at was partnering with Independence, the City of Independence, who has, had received regional funds to build their 700 megahertz radio system, because the, the radios used by Independence and by us are semi-the same. They, they would both function on the same backbone. However, they have some internal issues with their system now, and have recently found out that they're going to be mandated by the federal government to narrow band, and it's going to be, cause all kinds of issues on their budget. So we looked next to Kansas City, who also receive regional funds for the backbone of the project, and we are in preliminary discussions with them as far as determining costs. But it looks like it would be somewhere in the area of $2 million to buy the equipment necessary to jump onto their system and then pay them a monthly fee. Roughly, at this point, it looks like about $17 a radio to, for them to administer the network. These are preliminary figures only, and we're not, we haven't put together proposals, we haven't ended, entered into any serious negotiations. We're just trying to find out how bad it is. So that's a couple of the, of the major hurdles that we're looking forward to tackling, hopefully before I retire. So, any questions?
Questions of the caper and the chief. Ms. White?
Radio issues aside, I just have some very basic questions. Let's bring this whole emergency management back down to earth for a minute. Is there a written, is there a written protocol for the employees at City Hall?
For what, ma'am?
For any type of an emergency.
We have, we have an emergency operations plan that is an all-hazard plan that defines the roles and responsibilities regardless of the, of the emergency. It's reviewed every year by the State Emergency Management Agency. We've revised two particular annex, three particular annexes this year through, with the help of the Fire Department and Public Works. So it's a constantly evolving document that we vet by the experts. Does that help?
No.
Okay.
So, let me go a little deeper.
Okay.
Because I work in a hospital, so I've had all the ICS, and my concern is, especially after our recent tornado scare, and I understand that our staff and employees were still at work and not sure what they should be doing or where they should be going. My question is, why don't we have a written plan? And isn't there a committee made up of people from downstairs, including yourself, and people from upstairs, to put something together so that everyone knows what they're supposed to do and where they're supposed to go?
There was a breakdown in communication between downstairs and upstairs. We telephoned upstairs and told them it was a tornado warning. The question was, okay, we're under a watch? No, it is a warning. A tornado is, is imminently about possibility of striking the city, immediate danger, at which time people filed downstairs. So there, there was a, an unfortunate lapse there, but it was overcome. We got people downstairs, we sheltered them in place down there, just as, as we should. As far as a committee, I know of no such committee, ma'am.
So we have nothing, and say we have, two years from now, say we hire 20 new people at City Hall, there's nothing in writing to train a new employee on what to do in an emergency situation, be it fire, tornado, whatever?
Maybe we're not good enough at that, but we're going to get better. We talked with Mahesh Sharma today about that. You know, if, if the warning sirens are going off, we have had training in the past. We haven't had a recent training. I have talked with Mahesh, just as a matter of fact, today about appointing somebody or some people up here to assist City Hall in all aspects of, and that's what I talked about a little bit earlier. You can always get better at this, and you can, and we can have something in writing. I think you're right. If people come on, you know, 20 people come on a year from now, will they know? Probably need something better in place for that, and we're working on that.
If, I can, you know, it's, it's great. I would like to see this be a priority. At the hospital, we have it, we have a plan for every department. And you, you find that when you put your plan in action, you need to tweak it, you need to make changes to it, but at least you have the plan. And, and, you know, you've, you've got a calmness throughout the hosp, in our case, throughout the hospital, because you know what people should be doing and where they should be going. So given that, I think our staff at City Hall is one of our greatest assets in this city, I would really like to see that be a priority, please.
We, we have had preliminary discussions with Matt Mays, the Fire Marshal, about conducting such things. We've worked cooperatively with GE at 8800 on some of their fire drills as well, and it's just a matter of putting it in place. It's, it's not that momentous a hurdle, but it's one of those things, as you know, sometimes slips into entropy. You assume if, everyone knows if the building's on fire, get out of the building. But tornadoes come and go to the lowest level. But your, your point is valid. A written plan then eliminates all ambiguity. And no plan survives first contact, and is constantly tweaked. So your point's well taken, ma'am.
Mayor Barr?
Mr. Mock was next.
Yeah. On the, on the trainings itself, is there any dates for the trainings or anything like that, or?
Are you referring to the ICS training that I've mentioned on the last?
Yeah, for the elected officials, for GEMS?
Yeah. That is available online through that website, 24/7/365. For elected officials in your own position, I strongly recommend ICS 100, 200, and 700. That will give you a better understanding of not only what we do, but why we do it, and some of the paperwork associated with the recoupment of funds in the event of a disaster. So you'll see the, the importance of the documentation. You'll also understand a little bit better, sometimes we, we can scale up or scale back depending upon how the, how the event evolves, and those courses will, will help illustrate that.
Okay. On the training and exercise, just completed the NLE, NLE 11, first time ever?
Yes, sir.
And with the Rat Town Schools on TTX. What is NLE 11 and TTX?
I'm sorry, I slipped into acronymville. It's a, it's a hazard of dealing with the feds. NLE 11 is the national-level exercise that I explained about, the New Madrid Seismic Zone. And a TTX is a tabletop exercise. We've had several discussions with the school district. We're, it's a matter of making the schedules mesh. They have hired a contractor that is a, here I go again, an HC compliance, which is a standard for exercises, that has constructed an exercise for them, and now that we've got the, the national-level exercise, it's out of the way, it's just a matter of when's convenient for them, for us to get together.
Okay, the employees upstairs here, where do they take shelter in City Hall here, eh?
Downstairs, in the event of a tornado.
In the event of tornado, yes.
Yeah, it would be downstairs in cafeteria, or the lunchroom.
Lunchroom, okay. With the amateur radio club here, here in Rat Town, do we have a formal agreement with them?
No, we do not have a memorandum of understanding. We just work cooperatively towards it. There, the need for a memorandum of understanding or a formal agreement between these types of entities is limited utility, no money exchanges hands, none is anticipated, none, no promises are made. We just work together for the common good.
So just in case of emergency, we do have a contact?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the sirens, just in case they mixed function, every one of them, how would we go about, how would you guys?
Part of the emergency operations plan, in the event of a siren failure, is for the patrol cars in the area to drive every other street in their district with the siren operating, and give instructions over the PA system to take care of it.
Thank you.
Ms. Melton, you're next.
I do have some questions. I guess I'm kind of surprised that there's not an actual plan for emergency preparedness as far as the employees go, as far as what their procedural aspects are, you know? You shut down the computer, you lock the door, you go downstairs, or you just go downstairs? Are the doors still open? Can residents get into the building if need be for shelter? You know, there's a lot of different things like that, and, because I'm on that committee for risk management for my building, trying to, because we didn't have a plan. And I had 100 older adults downstairs, and it wasn't fun.
No, it's not.
So I understand the intricacies of trying to do this. It's very involved, and you don't want to get down to turn every light off, you know, that kind of stuff, because you want the people to be safe in an environment, but they have to know how to get down there, and the protocols for that, too.
And we had, we appointed people on May 25th in that event to stand at the doors and guide them to where they needed to go.
Okay.
A Band-Aid approach, perhaps, but we, we got the job done, and we are going to work towards getting a better documented procedure.
Okay. And one of the aspects of that, you said about the SWAT team coming into the building to do the intruder, but I guess my concern with that is, is that if SWAT's going to be in here, the intruder's already in here, and the employees have already met the intruder. So the employees would need to have some background of how to deal with an intruder, the protocols thereof, trying to get 911, being safe, getting out of the building, those kind of things. I mean, I understand the SWAT aspect of it.
There are many different facets to that, and a large number of them are situation-dependent.
Right.
Nowhere, I don't care what it is, is 100% safe.
No, it isn't.
All you can do is, is drill for the most common events and adapt from there.
True.
Our protocols and most of the SWAT protocols across the metropolitan region are go to the threat, neutralize the threat.
Right.
From, from our perspective. From, from the perspective of a civilian in the position, the polite acronym is GTO, is get out.
Right.
Get away from the threat as best as possible. Put as many walls or layers between you and the threat as you can get. There, it would be laborious and, and short-sighted to think that you could put all of those possible permutations of that threat into a procedure. No one would read it, and no one would remember it. Move away from the threat, that's the, that's the key to it.
Right.
In that particular instance.
Also, one of the things, too, is about the radios, because you just mentioned about, you know, if there was a siren failure and stuff like that. One of my aspects of that, do we ever do an all-clear?
No, we do not.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay.
No all-clears, nowhere in the metro.
Okay.
That's one of the things that the committee agreed on, is that no one will sound an all-clear. If you hear the siren, the threat still exists.
Because people think, oh, it's just, uh...
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah.
To bring that out, because that's an important highlight.
Yeah. But also about that, so, are the officers informed of the weather conditions through the dispatch?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, we normally cease all self-initiated activity in the event of that.
Right.
And at least on May 25th, I took over their air. We did the storm spotting and the dispatching of units basically out of my office because that was the immediate threat. That was the highest priority.
Right. But you still take 911 calls for individuals through the dispatch system?
Oh, absolutely.
So, I didn't know, that's why I guess my question was if it was just locked into weather, and nobody can get in with a 911?
No, ma'am.
Heart attack or something?
No, the two happened concurrently. It was just a seamless transfer in this particular case.
And so, then, the officers get information then through you, through the radio system, or?
We have a multitude of options available. They can get it through their MDTs, their mobile David term-
Oh, terminals, okay.
Terminals, or over the air. So, if one system fails, there is still the other.
Okay. One of the questions on the grant that we've got and the NIMS requirements on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it a requirement of the grant that the elected officials be trained in the emergency response?
That is a, it depends question, because the guidance on NIMS applies to those that are making decisions in the EOC.
Oh, okay.
So, if, as I would anticipate you would want, a tornado comes through town, and you all are concerned for your constituents and how to proceed in recovery, you would want a voice in the EOC and to help guide or administrate. Your help would be appreciated.
Uh huh.
But in order to do that, to be a decision-maker at the EOC, you have to be trained.
Okay.
And those are the courses I outlined.
And so, these courses are online? Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I do have more questions, but I'll let somebody else come in with this.
Mr. Azar.
I did want to take just a moment to talk about, because I know there are board members that are interested in what we would do if we had a crisis. And I know we, after watching TV and what happened in Joplin, we think of quick-striking emergencies. But since I've been on the board, we did have an emergency in Raytown, and I did get a chance to watch our police department and this board operate very quickly during the storm of, I believe it was 2000, 2001, when we were hit very quickly. We were slammed with an ice storm. An ice storm that buckled so many trees that almost every single neighborhood had streets blocked. Then it was followed by an incredible drop in temperature. I will tell you this, before that storm ended, this board was called into an emergency session in the wee hours of the morning. We immediately started talking about budgets and what we were going to be doing. I know that it was followed by at least two briefing sessions. I think there might have been more that occurred during the course of that day. And even in the next day, where the board came to City Hall, went to the briefing room and the police department downstairs, and we were being briefed. And so, we always kept abreast what was going on. I was absolutely amazed with how quick, within hours, as people were being forced out of their homes because of lack of heat, how quick the school district and our EMS department immediately opened up buildings, and how quick the information got out to the public and they were taking in people. I mean, it was really pretty impressive. It wasn't dozens, it was hundreds.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. And I, out of that came an ordinance that allows us to register the people who rely on life support machines that require electricity. So, we do now have them, or at least they have the opportunity to be registered.
Yes, sir.
We also have a system of working with the power and light companies. So, even in an emergency like a tornado, all that's in place already.
Yes, sir.
And I will tell you, our police department, the EMS department, the fire department, really, maybe we didn't have everything in place we needed as far as things written down, but they operated so efficiently, so quickly, and with this board, you know, side by side, that I thought we did as well as any community in the city of Kansas City when this hit. So, we do have some experience, and we're not totally, you know, ignorant about what's going on. So, in a tornado, we have an entire city wiped out, it's a little bit different, you know?
Absolutely.
You're going to rely on outside help.
Absolutely. Thank you for your kind words, and they're much appreciated. As been mentioned, no plan is perfect. They constantly evolve. And training evolves to meet the demands and the things that have occurred. We learn lessons. We have a multitude of websites available and programs available to learn from other people's experience. That's the best way. Anybody can learn from their own mistakes. A wise man learns from somebody else's mistake. So, we do try to keep abreast of what is going on across the country. Your all's integration and cooperation is vitally important. Normally, briefings are held at least once every operational period, whatever that may be, depending upon the event. So, I look forward to the continued cooperation between you all and the emergency responders as well.
Mr. Ertz.
Thank you. I did sign up for the NICSOL, and that seems to be working great. If I could, if you could send me a list of those sirens, locations, I think that'd be nice for me. I think, sorry or thankfully, I may have got this ball rolling, but as far as the questions that I sent, I did notice from a cellphone conversation during that Wednesday storm that a siren was obviously on at the place I was calling and not. So, what triggers the sirens?
Chief mentioned that to me, and I think what probably happened, and I'm guessing here, is that because we have Kansas City sirens surrounding us, and the sirens, any siren only runs for a set period of time before it has to reset, and then it'll start up again. And I think you probably got in the reset gap on ours, and Kansas City's siren was still running, or vice versa. Because the locations that you mentioned, I believe one of them was Joe Herndon. Kansas City has a siren on West Ridge at about 78th, and we have one at the church there on Sterling, just south of 50 Highway. So, you should have been able to hear both of them, but if one was during a gap, that could explain it.
So, they do cycle off and on?
Yes.
That's not to, like, I think when I was growing up, there used to be all clears. That's probably, now you would just tune into your television or radio station or get to know it to find out when it's clear now.
As long as the threat exists, we will continue to sound the sirens to their performance ability.
Pat, I know Frank's got in one of his slides, too, there's five sirens in Kansas City that border our city.
I could see it.
And I couldn't remember when you asked if you heard it at Herndon, or you heard it in the cellphone in the background.
Yeah.
Ron, Lou Ridge?
Right.
It was probably, I was going to say-
That borders Kansas City there, so.
Kansas City has one at roughly Gregory and Manchester, which would be well within that area of Ridge.
Some of my other questions, I think, were, as far as a Joplin-type event in town, one thing I noticed when everybody was in the basement at the Herndon Center and the school district did a remarkable job, even some handicap people making sure everybody was safe. But one thing, everybody was on their cellphone, and I think therefore none of them worked. To call emergency services or to get help, I believe the chief told me that sometimes the tower that you use for your communication gets struck by lightning, and doesn't work. And when you're talking about these roving cars, is that also to be flagged down, emergency services, or what? How would you, if you had a need to get a hold of an ambulance, and obviously if your phone's and towers, what, how do you go about?
It is very likely that in the event of an actual emergency, the cell towers will be overloaded or out of commission due to damage on their part or something of that nature. Very likely. When the World Trade Towers were struck, you couldn't get a cell, period. It just wouldn't work. A tornado here would probably end up the same way. In answer to your question, absolutely. If you have an emergency, flag down one of the cars. There's no problem there. Landlines will get through, assuming it's not VoIP. If it is a VoIP system, it may or may not, depending upon the nature of the system and the backbone to the internet. But what's called POTS, Plan O Telephone System, they'll get through.
I did, we do, Raytown, after the ice storm that Alderman, Azar was talking about, lots of downed power lines. I'm sure everybody, I know I was out for like eight days. I noticed the city of Independence, after that, received money to bury a lot of their lines. Have we ever, as an emergency basis, heard anything or any requirements of our utility companies to?
We're in a little different situation in that Independence is, Independence' power company is owned by the city, and they can mandate how they do business.
Okay.
We're not in that position. And even with underground lines, they have to come up somewhere, and that burying them will not eliminate all outages. It would eliminate what you're talking about as far as having live lines down across the street to a certain extent.
Sure. Do we have special police officers that are, or are all of our police officers trained for an emergency situation?
All of them are trained on ICS standards, yes, sir.
They actually do that in the academy now. It's basic police academy.
And basically, I'm sure, you know, they're going to take care of their families, but would they, do they know to report to work should an emergency come up?
Well, yeah, by several different means. Everybody either has a pager or cellphone. They, it's mandated that they have that so that we can contact them. And obviously, if there's an emergency, immediate to the family, you know, we expect them to take care of that first or to get in safely. But when we call everybody in, we expect them all to show up.
My other question, just, I'll try to be brief, about the radio system that's on a timeframe, some of that software and hardware with that, it sounds like it would be, take a lot of time to replace. What type of a timeframe are we looking at needing to have that into a budget situation?
Yesterday.
Yeah, that's true, too.
As is normal, that's the case. They don't give you a lot of advance notice when it's going obsolescent. But I have been advised that it is doable within a reasonable amount of time after giving the go order.
Half a year, or?
Yes.
Okay. Something to that effect.
A lot would depend upon where they're at in their manufacturing cycle and what's the age of readiness we are, but not a prolonged period, no, sir.
Thank you.
And we're back to Ms. Melson again.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. One thing I was going to tell you, and you might already know about this, but now they have handheld weather radios?
Got one in my truck.
Do you? Because I found those when we were doing hurricane packing, emergency kits in New Orleans. But I thought those were really great tools, because everybody could have one of those, and have it in their car, or have it, you know, it's not something you have to go plug in.
If there's one thing we're not short of in the cars, it's radios.
Yeah.
And there are a number, your point is well taken, particularly in some of the cars that aren't equipped with some of the other radios.
Yeah.
But for the most part, troops in the field get the information they need without any problem.
Okay. And then, if there's any planning to be involved or the risk management, and I know that we've tried to do the CERT training, the Community Emergency Response Training, I mean, I would really like to be involved in that, because I think I have to do a lot of risk management stuff for Wyandotte County, and, you know, it's certainly, you learn from others.
You have some excellent people in emergency management in Wyandotte County.
Yeah.
You do.
Yeah.
Work with them all the time, and appreciate the offer.
Yeah. Also, I did have one question for Chief Lynch, and I think it was back in July 2002 when you said that you took over the emergency preparedness, is that since that was additional responsibility to your position, wasn't there additional compensation for that?
I didn't tell you exactly how it happened. Kurt Winston came downstairs and said, hey, I don't think he said, would you like to do this? He said, would you do it? And met with staff and felt that was appropriate for us to do that. It wasn't compensated for it. The grant, I think, was always in place before that, and Tom Taylor did it before that. It was Don EMS. And like Captain Stranemar said, it's kind of grown since then. It was 28,000 maybe back then, that ENPG grant. And we've had rewrites and stuff, and, you know, kept up to date with it. And I think today, you know, knock on wood, it's, you know, if it keeps coming in, it's about 50,000 a year. So, I mean, that's how it all transpired.
Okay, so there's no additional compensation for you taking over that emergency preparedness aspect of it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Azar.
One thing I wanted to add was, one thing that differs Kansas City from Joplin, and just by comparison, if we had the same tornado of the same scope that, let's say, hit the north into Raytown, and went into Raytown, Kansas City, Independence, actually had three cities, which could happen, or if we had some kind of a catastrophe that was much broader than just the city of Raytown, because we're probably not going to be isolated, there really is a master plan already in place that creates a line of authority of all the possible authorities within the metropolitan area that allow them to work in concert. And so, we may be only a small piece of the picture of how the whole thing is handled. Isn't that correct?
Yes and no, sir. Each jurisdiction, of course, is responsible for their own health and well-being and is answerable to their own governing bodies. However, the emergency managers of the three cities you mentioned all work together all the time. I'm at meetings, I see the emergency management staff of Kansas City and Independence more often than I see my wife. It's that bad or good, depending upon your viewpoint. So, we are, we are very accustomed to filling in for each other. I can go to Independence as EOC right now and run it. No problem. Kansas City's would take me a little while to spin up, but I could do it. We are that meshed in the way we respond. So, in answer to your scenario, from a emergency management point of view, not a problem. Not a problem. Now, having said that, an EF5 tornado is always a problem, but the way it is handled would not be.
Thank you.
Very good. Chief and captain, do you wish to go over any of this NICSOL information from James tonight, or do you want to?
I would suggest, if you all have questions or anything, please feel free to give Mr. Bradford a call at Dispatch Center.
Chief.
I'm sorry, wait a minute. I'm sorry, just to add to that, Mr. Bradford has plans to, he's designing a brochure, and he is hopeful that our budget will handle, maybe putting it in with the Sewer Bell some month to get it out to the public. So, we're working on that to get the information out.
I know that the week before the Joplin tornado hit, we actually had our drill, I think, downstairs, and it was simulating the pneumatic fault. But from my position, I was, it really hit home when we started, when Joplin had their incident, I started to see the unfolding of, or not unfolding, but the preparation coming to part here. I mean, I saw EMS, I knew what they were waiting to hear, I knew the fire department was waiting, I knew our guys were lined up, I knew Public Works was lined up. And just the protocol that we went through was exactly as we had practiced that.
Excellent.
And I think had we not had that, I would not have known how to answer the questions I got about dispatching people to Joplin. So, that, I mean, it was good to see that, and I look forward to even more detailed preparation here. You know, in our building, we had floor captains. I was in a conference call, and the floor captain came in and said, get off the phone, we have a tornado warning. And I didn't get off the phone. I thought it was, you know, more important to be on the phone. And they said, I'm going to stand right here, I'm going to hang it up in two seconds if you're not out the door. So, there was an insistence on that. And I look forward to that same sort of operation here. I want everybody to know what's going on. I want to know that when the citizens are here at the front desk, I want them to know where they can go, and I want our people prepared. And we have had a lot of turnover here in the last four, five years, so it's important. So, I thank you for your efforts on that. Good, long presentation, and we covered a lot of ground, and I thank you, gentlemen.
If I could just end up-
Hold on one second.
If I could just end up, I was told this weekend by one of the aldermen that sometimes I don't do a very good job about telling you all about things we're doing and stuff, and I do appreciate those comments. But along those lines, I just want to tell you that- But along those lines, I just want to tell you that in preparing this city, Frank is up, he was up till 4 o'clock this morning, listening to the weather radios and stuff. I just want to thank him for all the work he does and stuff, and I know he gets a lot of information out to you all, too. And anyway, just thank him.
I do get those, Frank, and I appreciate them. My kids laugh at me sometimes, but not a one of them laughed at me the day that a tornado warning happened, so. Mr. Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just wanted to add one thing. If information is put out, say, in the sewer bill, I was wondering if you could include the information as far as the RAID system, and that would give information about the department and what's taking place there that people can sign up for and get on the online. Is there some way to communicate that better to the-
I'm sorry, was it REDS online? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we can-